Call to order this school committee meeting, May ninth, two thousand twenty-four. Steph, can you lead us?
Here.
Yeah.
Here.
Yeah. So we do have an executive session on tonight. Chair seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
So that'll go to the end, so. Want to start with the chairman's report, so. As a committee, we want to say happy teacher and nurses appreciation week to all of our teachers and staff, and I think most importantly, we're talking about teachers and nurses are very important. My daughters and us, but today we're talking about teachers and staff and. I think teaching is a difficult profession right now. It's changed a lot over the years, but I can tell you from what I see in our district and our teachers, they're pretty steadfast in making the student the best student they can be. My wife's a teacher, my friend Tommy's wife's a teacher, and we can tell you teachers work, their work doesn't end at three o'clock. My Sundays are my alone time because doing prep and doing all the work for the week. And, you know, I think the one thing that I don't think teachers get credit for is how they're vested in students, how they care about their, do you need to answer? Okay. No, they get vested in their students and I see them, I see them at little league games for their students, I see them, you know, especially when graduation comes up and they are a secondary teacher, third grade teacher, fifth grade teacher, watching their students graduate, and so I think I speak for all of us when I just say happy teacher appreciation.
Funny, you mentioned how teachers change over. And like I said, we have a gentleman today who fifty years day in the district, talk about changing how they've been taught. He started in nineteen seventy-four, teachers still put their cigarettes out in their forehead, and they can't do that now. So they had a kind of, I mean, think about that, fifty years of teaching, that's five decades, this guy had a acclimate to all this new technology, the new methods, and he's still one of the most well-respected guys in the district. So Mr. Bontempo, congratulations, and there's fifty more.
Yeah, everyone lives. So.
Son loves it.
Oh, he's awesome. So, I mean, think about it, we had, I had a. John had a. So I also want to thank FinCom and the town manager for putting our student enrichment program through town meeting. I think with this enrichment program, we listen to the stakeholders, the parents, and you know, we're focused on education and student achievement. And the program is pretty cool, it has something for everyone, and it'll be run at the Valmonti and middle school and high school, and it'll be after school, and it has a lot of the tutoring, but there's also fun stuff, like you saw last week, last school committee meeting with the newspaper club, maybe we might have golf, but I think it's, you're gonna see a big change, and I think we're looking to launch this in September, depending on timing and everything, but I'd just like to say thank you, and I think the advantages. So I also want to thank Mrs. Giroux, Ms. Worley, and everyone who put the event together last weekend at the Meg building. It was really took me back to time to when Cliffdale was like, you know, rally cars and kids wearing ties. So it was great, it was great, some of the old classes came through, they walked you through everything, the old bond house and everything, so it was really, really cool. And it was, it got me thinking, when we were in school and we learned about Saugus history, you know, and maybe it's something we should go back. I think about, you think about it, five years from now, it'll be at our four hundredth anniversary, you know? The few people that are gonna remember when we started. You know, at the end of the day, I think, especially a lot of teachers, like, obviously, a teacher here who brings kids to Europe and sees how old Europe is, and I think when we travel, when I travel, and I say, hey, my town's four hundred years old, when I go out west, like eighteen fifty's old, right? So it's pretty cool. So. And we're remiss, I just want to wish every mother out there a happy Mother's Day. Sweet joy, take time off, you know, take a few minutes for yourself, after you're done cleaning the house, doing the laundry and that kind of stuff, take a few minutes.
Probably stop talking now.
No, enjoy the day, I just want to say happy Mother's Day, and you know, I'd like for these guys to say, these guys are more than welcome to.
I mean, my mother's literally in the room right now, so I have to say happy Mother's Day, so happy Mother's Day.
Yeah, and you're the fourth best on the school committees.
Absolutely, that's what she says. Number one, right here.
So with that said, the one last thing is, we've had some conversation with teachers and stuff, and it keeps coming up to attendance, student attendance. If you're not in school, you're not learning anything, so it's important that it gets to school. You know, we were talking about it, and I learned something. From Mr. Pomerini, and he said, my best ability in a student is availability. So I think that's an important thing is get your kids to school. It's, they're not gonna gain anything, you might say, hey, they got moved to the next grade, they probably got moved because they just, it's get them to school, please. I'm just, you know, so I would turn it over to anyone up.
I too want to say thank you to all the teachers out there, and enjoy your week. You know, you make a great example talking about, I mean, there's great examples everywhere that we look. But, you know, Mr. Bontempo is one of those shining stars that really, really proves almost on a daily basis on what I think why people become people. We look at Mr. Pomerini, right, sitting right here, and look at how much work he's put into the robotic program and others. You know, we have another teacher that's taken hundreds of students now all through Europe and away, I mean, the dedication that they show is amazing. Mr. Richards talked about how his son, you know, had Mr. Bontempo in time. My son is just finishing his junior year in college at U O, and two weeks ago, Friday night at eight o'clock, got a checking call from the Bontempo, make sure he was doing his stuff. That stuff goes, you know, unnoticed, and not a lot of people see that stuff. It's just three examples that we just talked about, or how great staff we have in this district, and we always have, so, you know, the, you know, some of the other teachers and what they do, you know, we just had to run the marathon for our own children and show how important it was for special education, I mean, there's examples everywhere. And then lastly, to my colleagues, my nurse friends, I see what you do every day, thank you so much, I appreciate everything that you do for so many patients, and I don't think half the world knows what you guys do, so thank you, nurse. And to everybody out there, have a great day, Sunday, it's your day, happy Mother's.
So, kind of in the same lines as that, last night, showcase, middle school. Saw their work, I'm gonna tell you, the staff, kids, extremely hard getting. Gotta give credit where credit is due, Ms. Marto, Mr. Sullivan, Michael, and all, the entire staff, did a great job getting the place ready, and I'm gonna tell you, probably parents, you know, and it really bothers me because we have incidents that happen, like every other school, we have very minimal incidents compared to the district around, but they get magnified on Facebook, parents jump on it, pounds on you, get five hundred comments on a scuffle in the gym, but something good like this that's going on, the kids are showcasing their work for the parents to see, then nobody shows up, that to me is very disheartening, you know, it just tells me that people kind of like misery, I hate to say it, you know, they like the things that make the district look bad, but there's way more that could hear that happened, bad, way more, and they just don't see it because nobody shows up. You go to Acapella, nobody's there, you go to the band concert, nobody's there. People need to start showing up, you know, I don't know what happens between elementary school and middle school, I really don't, you go to elementary school for one of these events, every parent's there, then you go to the middle school and it's like, no, they didn't get directions to the place, and all the kids are there, but the parents aren't, I don't understand. So parents, yeah, you can blame the district all you want, you guys need to get more involved, need to start showing up, you need to start showing support, there's a lot of good stuff that you're missing by staying home and looking on Facebook, you'll never see one of us engage on Facebook. It's half true, there's always two sides to every story, so just please, next time there's an event, come support the kids, even if your kids aren't there, that's all, you're gonna see the good things that are happening in this.
Thank you. Moving on to the report of the superintendent.
Stole a lot of my thunder. No, I wanted to, I wanted to wish the teachers a happy appreciation week and the nurses there, their day was yesterday, the appreciation day for nurses, they do a great job, and I do appreciate everything they do on a day-to-day basis, so, is it the week? But I thought I had the days right, but I did want to mention today's celebration of the fiftieth anniversary for Mr. Bontempo, it's great to see him, he was there for years before I entered the high school, so he's been around quite a bit, and I'm not sure when there will be a next time for a Saugus staff member to reach fifty years in it. I don't see it happening, it's not gonna happen for the next twelve years anyway, but I mean, and it's not gonna happen, so, so, I mean, we're talking decades away from finding somebody else that reaches that point, so I do also want to thank the town manager and the finance committee for last night voting to move that through to the town meeting, the enrichment, I think that's gonna do a lot of good for our students, and I do want to wish every, every mother a happy Mother's Day on Sunday. So that was really what I had to say, the only other thing that didn't get mentioned, and I'm pretty sure I get the timeline correct, is that we did open the time capsule in the town hall almost two weeks ago now, it was a great event, there was a good turnout, and it was, it was very interesting to see, it was one of those things where I think it's now put like complete closure to that, that old building, because I mentioned it when I spoke that day was, you know, the school was built, they put the time capsule in, we got the new school built, I saw the school being demolished during the pandemic, I was so happy they recovered the time capsule, and then life happened and the pandemic happened, and we finally opened the time capsule, but I think that kind of put the final period on the end of the story for that old building, so it was nice to see the artifacts, they recovered a lot of stuff from the town, pretty much everything that, almost everything that came out of it probably now would be on a flash drive or not even, I mean, it would be, so it's kind of, I'm not sure if we're gonna do a time capsule, but hopefully we do, maybe even reuse the one that we had, but it'd be weird to try to even figure out what's going on, because like I said, everything that was in there was paper and it's all, it's all electronic now, and you don't want to put a flash drive in because they won't even know what to do with that.
I thought it was great, they put, where to find the, where to find the time capsule in the time capsule.
But that was definitely in there, that was, that cracked me up too, so. The only other part of my report that I wanted to share was I did, and he was mentioned by a couple of people, being a teacher who does go above and beyond for our students, I did want to invite Mr. Lavoyian today to go over the trip he just had and the trip that he's got planned for next spring.
Before you stop, Mr. Lavoyian, I just want to say thank you for everything, it's truly appreciated, it really is, yeah, my kids went on it, it's phenomenal.
Thank you, I appreciate it, I, a couple of things, you know, piggybacking off some of the things you guys had said today at the celebration in honor of Bontempo, by the way, it kind of just, I'm not a math, but if you double my career point, I'm four years shy of. I can't even tap, but there, this morning, there were a couple of tired teachers, actually, one of whom, along with Mr. Fornella at times, had kind of started the international travel program that we currently have, and so I'd be remiss if I didn't thank them and the other teachers over the years who have brought our kids to continents, hundreds of kids have been able to see outside of Saugus, and these trips to me are important, not just because, you know, post-pandemic, especially kind of getting out there and saying, hey, there's this whole big place to learn and seek, they, the trips teach so many valuable skills, kids come back from the skills, from the trips, more aware of their academics, socially aware, they learn street skills in a sense, you know, being in a foreign place with street signs that don't kind of match up with the words you know and things like that, you build some confidence, so it's not just a vacation, I think a lot of times people think that, we as a group are constantly on the move, and it's exhausting, this particular trip was eleven days, so we're up early, out to a site, visiting the site all day, it's nothing to have fifteen, eighteen thousand steps on a, like an easy day, twenty-five, thirty thousand plus steps on a much more busy day, I've topped it off last year, had forty-two thousand steps one day in Rome, you know, it's a busy day, and we do kind of them in a row, we learn constantly, company that we partner with most regularly is EF, that's education first, and it's a bit of a misnomer because safety's first, but education comes in a very strong sector, and I'm happy to work with them, they do all the logistics for the tour, so this past tour was an eleven-day tour, we landed in London, we had four days in the UK, we took the Eurostar under the English Channel to France, two days in Paris, a night in Brussels, and then wrapped up our tour with two nights in Amsterdam, and, you know, I could go through every place in the itinerary, I won't, Bill told me to keep it short, so.
He's got places to go.
Right, you know, I know most of you know, and it's on the tagline of all my emails, but I write a blog about the trip, so if you're interested, you can always go there, you know, relive the trip, like. The things that stood out to me on this trip, you know, kids will ask me and parents will ask, which one's your favorite, I always throw the Tom Brady answer. But each trip holds a special place within my memory and my heart, and for this particular trip, we had twenty-one kids, small group, three other chaperones and myself, one of our elementary school teachers was able to join us well, and the thing that jumped out is no, and like, they had a right to complain, I mean, like, you know, everyone has a right to complain, there's minuscule complaints along the way, we're in London, it's a huge city, if you've never been, it's so expansive, size, and, you know, people complain about the Walnut Street traffic right now, drive around London, traffic, and they're on the wrong side of the road, it's nuts, but it's just hours sometimes to get from our hotel to the city center or back, and they just were cool, they were just chilled, it was like our weather recently has been rainy and fifties, that's what we had pretty much every day, and nobody was complaining about it, now, might seem like a little thing, but it actually goes a long way to the just overall trip mentality, if you teach kids that when adversity's in front of you, you can like rise to the occasion and, you know, be better for it, they are so appreciative of that, you know, I told them before we even left, if it rains when we're in France, it rains, when you're walking through the Latin Quarter and the cobblestones listening because of the freshly fallen rain, there's beauty in it, and these kids got it in a way that I can't really, you know, put into as nice of a words as it probably should. We were fortunate enough to see Les Mis in the West End one night, kids that didn't want to go to the theater were dragged to the theater, and almost all of them asked, I don't know if I'll go again, but I'm glad I saw it, glad I went to the theater, and kids that love the theater were in tears, totally moved by the performance, that's something that will always rest, every other time I've been to London with students, we've seen Wicked, so to see a different play was amazing anyways, but, I mean, the West End production of Les Mis is kind of the one that's recognized as the most important product, so that was huge. In France, we got to the Louvre, and there were no lines, and it's busy there, you know, this million people go through that museum a day, and we show up and there's no lines, we walk right in, we get into the room with the Mona Lisa, and there's maybe, you know, twenty-five, thirty, forty people, that's it, the last time I was there, there were probably three hundred, and that was with masks on, and, you know, I'm right out of COVID, so to see it, I'm just amazing, and, you know, I walk around, I try to spy on the kids, if you will, when I replace like, but there's twenty of them, they're all dispersed in groups, they're taking the museum on their own, and I saw two of our young men athletes, not your prototypical museum goers, if you will, but like staring at a piece, just intensive look and appreciate it, that's what these trips, you know, they, they change people in these ways, one of those young men came to me today, he's going next year, all right, well, if you can, that's great, you know, but like, I didn't necessarily think he was gonna enjoy his trip, I obviously did, we got to Amsterdam when we were able to visit the Anne Frank, again, this is a place that traditionally has a line goes around the block or two, and we were right there, no lines, first group in, and in a sense, we had her house themselves, and I've been before, every time is an emotional experience for some, because I knew it could be emotional, and I know that some people don't really dig it, if you will, maybe it's uncomfortable for them, so they kind of walk through, or maybe they don't understand really the story, so they, they kind of rush through, I went through quicker than I normally would, and I waited in this little cafe part of the museum, I waited a good while before the first group of students came, they all took appreciated aspects of it, it's a personal experience, so I didn't really, you know, ask many of them what they had learned, as they might do somewhere else, but you could tell from some of their faces that they picked up the valuable lessons that, you know, her story teaches, so, you know, thank you as a committee, while this committee hadn't necessarily voted on that particular trip, some of you had, for the longstanding history support you've given to Saugus students to see the world, learn while we do it. It, every trip changes me too, and every year I say to the kids, well, I don't have many left in me, I'm getting old, I'm gonna retire from these soon, and every year I feel that way, they are exhausting trips, but then I meet or re-meet our kids in a different perspective, and they say, no, you got another one in you, you know, and this group absolutely did. Before I talk briefly about the next trip that we have on the docket, if you will, which has already been approved, but I would give you the highlights if you can't remember, a point about folks showing up, I was at the middle school showcase last night, because I had a trip meeting for next year scheduled as well, and I agree that we're not a lot of people, I had one parent show up to my trip meeting, and she had already enrolled her daughter for upcoming trip, she didn't need to be there, so we chatted, you know, answered some of her questions specifically, but I get, when I send out like an invite, I can view how many people are seeing the invite, and I know that through the services that we have with the school district, we can do the same, something is wrong with the engagement level, with the email system that we're sending out, and I can just speak from historic to data, an average trip that I've put forward, and this goes back, you know, two thousand ten, two thousand thirteen or so, at this point, after having sent it out to parents, would have probably twelve hundred views, and I have three hundred views on the trip site, now, it's like every time I click on it, it goes up one, right, so it's not, it's not twelve hundred people thinking they're gonna send their kid here, but that historic has dropped, post-COVID, I think the trip we just got back from, the trip website had maybe four hundred, and so there's something wrong with our electronic engagement home, whatever it might be, I think that the word is getting out, I know the administrative staff helped me be on, and they don't need to do it, they helped me get the word out for these trips, but, but we have to figure it out, I think we needed to get into it a bit, see what's going on, some folks that I chatted with teachers said that the emails might be old, and so it looks like they're being engaged, but they may not be, parents put an email in at first grade, and by the time they're in tenth grade, it's changed quite a few times, so maybe doing something to update that, but something to think about and to look in maybe over the summer, because certainly we want more people at the middle school showcase, those kids did some amazing work. I was partial to all the history exhibits, but, but still, people need to see the good work our kids are doing, and that's just another one, and then as I was leaving, the parking lot was pretty empty for the coral camp, that's another shame. Yeah, so I agree with you there, our next trip, not to hug the microphone, but our next trip is to Spain and Portugal, it's one day less, so it'll be a ten-day tour, those include the travel days, so it's really eight days on the ground in Europe, I'm opting to go for kind of shorter trips to maybe lesser-known destinations, or at least less-popular destinations, simply because I'm trying to keep costs down, you know, as everything increases in price, I want to be cognizant of who our kids are, I grew up here, you know, not a wealthy person by any means, and so this particular trip is, you know, two or three hundred dollars less than the trip from last year, actually maybe even more than, more so, and so I try to have enrollment open early for kids, so they can have payment programs that are affordable for their families and seek out assistance for family and friends and things to that nature, so eight days really on the ground, we'll land in Madrid, and then we will on coach bus go from Madrid to Salamanca, kind of on our way into Portugal, we'll do a day trip to Porto, we'll see the city of Fatima, and we'll make our way and wrap up in Lisbon. I have been to Madrid with students before, in two thousand and ten, told the mom last night that it snowed when we were there, they hardly forget snow, so it's probably, it's probably the last time they had snow, so I'm hoping for better weather than that, and then I've never been to Portugal with students, and I'm not even sure if any of my predecessors have taken students to Portugal either, and Saugus has a fairly strong, you know, Portuguese descendant group within our community, so I think it's a really cool and wonderful opportunity for folks that might have that connection to have their, you know, children see where their family had sailed from at some point, and because I've never taken kids to these places before, I'm really excited because it's something kind of new for me, I'm used to going to places I've seen before, which is great, from a logistical point, I know how to get around and things like that, but I'll be, I'll be a little bit more like, probably in awe of the places that we're seeing because I haven't been there, exciting for me, I don't know if you guys have any questions about how the trips typically run or any of our destinations, happy to, you know, answer questions if you have any or things like that.
What is the trip cost for kids?
So the trip that we have upcoming, if a student was to enroll tonight, it was, I may be off by a few, but I think it's three thousand nine hundred nineteen, that will go up, you know, as you move through the summer, each month, you might see a small increase in the cost, because you're, they're booking in and basically you save the earlier book, if you wait until October, which is really kind of the last time I would expect somebody to go in, it could be as, you know, as high as say four thousand three hundred or something to that, it includes airfare, lodging, breakfast and dinner each day you're on the trip, as well as a tour guide that is with us the entire time that we travel, and all the admission to any of the sites that are on the itinerary that we, so, you know, it's costly, but it's inclusive, it kind of stuff, so, yeah, yeah, and you don't have to worry about organizing, you know, the company organizes all the logistics behind
Do the kids fundraise for it?
I don't fundraise for the trips that I lead, in large part because we ask our families to fundraise for everything, and while I would love to have scholarships where we could, you know, have kids who want to go but can't necessarily afford it, like, I'd love to have that, I also don't want to steal from, you know, track or any of the other programs that we have that are fundraising, so I haven't traditionally, but the company we have has an option for folk that their student traveler can send out to family and friends, it's kind of like a, like a GoFundMe for their trip, so I tell them at recruitment meetings that, you know, use that, send it to your family and friends, instead of birthday gifts, Christmas gifts, things like that, just ask for a contribution, and I know some people have, you know, used it, but I haven't fundraised.
Thank you, and thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much.
Yeah. Yeah. It was great to have him there. And, you know, all the kids that, uh, his little group of friends, I, beforehand, I hope no one takes offense, but I was like, yeah, we got a group of like knucklehead sophomore boys that go in and they're all kind of friends. And I don't know it's how they're going to be. I'm going to have to chase them down. They were amazing. You know, they like sponges. They took it all in. Uh, and then, you know, at dinnertime and then back to the hotel time, that's when the sophomore boy, you know, came out.
It's funny you say that because now, um, they went to Europe. Now here's a kid that, if I put him in front of the Belmonte, find the high school. So now he's like, my friends are going to go to Boston. So you put a little too much confidence into him.
That's good though. I'm happy. I'm happy to hear that.
Yeah. Thanks for, thanks for everything you do. Honestly, as we're talking tonight, were things you remember from school or the teachers you had that things that stay with?
It's actually one of the last.
I actually read that in his diary. So, Adana, thank you again. I appreciate it. And, uh, you know, at any point, if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer it. I have no idea where or if I will be back, uh, asking for 2026. But most likely I will be sometime in the fall. I'm not sure.
We'll see. We'll see you in the fall.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Like, like Tommy said, I mean, we have a lot of, we have a lot of good. Moving on to reports, the subcommittees.
Chairman. Um, I have a couple of pieces of items for the athletic subcommittee. Um, we met about three weeks ago. Talked about a whole host of issues. Uh, one of them, we talked about how things were going with the spring, uh, upcoming for fall sport. One of the questions that I do have for the superintendent and probably for Principal Sullivan is if we could get an update on the cert for the girls soccer coach. Um, that position is vacant. And, um, a lot of things happened over the summer by way of organizing and whatnot. So if I could just, we could just get an update on that.
Mr. Trak, can I answer that? I think fairly accurately.
Oh, okay.
I know that they, uh, Mr. Sullivan met with a few of the players on the team, I want to say last week, and I think they did conduct a few interviews already. I'm not sure if they're done, but I think they've, they've conducted the interviews for the candidates they have. I don't know where we are as far as moving forward, but I know that they have started the conduct.
And the last thing that I have is, um, our subcommittee consists of eight people, uh, very committed administrators and, um, more importantly, uh, parent, um, participant, they are amazing. Uh, but everybody's lives are busy and, and and sometimes it's tough to get it for them and that's the most important thing. Uh, we have a gentleman that's been working with, uh, has two student athletes in the school. He's been working with the track program as a fundraiser and, and just a well-respected guy throughout the community. Uh, and again, he's done an amazing job with his children. Uh, he's requested to be a part of the athletic subcommittee. Uh, I spoke with him. He's actually attended our meeting several times. Uh, and for that, you know, after much discussion with him, I really come and happy to put his name before this committee to be, um, you know, approved. So at this time, I'd like to nominate, uh, for the athletic subcommittee, Mr. Eric Brumberg, um, to be appointed to the athletic.
Sure. So, um, yeah, in front of us, a nominee for Mr. Brumberg for the subcommittee.
Thank you. I appreciate that. He is, uh, you folks have seen his daughter here speak to us eloquently and, um, you know, Eric is a, he does such a great job, uh, for the kids. And again, two, two great student athletes. I know he's going to do well. Thank you. That's all I have.
So next we have approval of bills for May 9th, 2024 in the amount of $780,585. Dollars and cents.
Motion to approve.
Yes, seconds. Can we do a roll?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Next, we have acceptance of school committee minute, open meeting, April 25th, 2024.
Motion to approve.
Yes, second. All in favor? Uh, approval of field trip requests from, um, middle school and high school bands from at Delta Tent Stadium. Manchester, New Hampshire, Fisher Cat game, attending game.
Motion to approve.
Yes, second. All in favor? Um, acceptance of six $50 Mark Cast gift cards from Vizanta of Chelsea and North Shore to to blueprint.
Motion to approve.
Yes, second. All in favor? Acceptance of $30 contribution, Saugus Education Fund by Virginia. Olga Vio on people count 2004.
Motion to approve.
Yes, second. All in favor? Um, acceptance of, acceptance of $50 contribution to the Saugus Education Fund by David Berry on April 26th, 2000.
Motion to approve.
Yes, seconds. All in favor? Acceptance of a donation materials from Junior Aid Association of Melrose for prom decorations. Martin prom donation of buses.
Motion to approve.
Yes, second. It's all in favor? Acceptance of $4,4760 from Winways for buses to Canterbury Lake. Canterbury Lake Park Field Prep for grade six and seven.
Motion to approve.
Cheers, second. Can we take a roll on this?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. Acceptance of $250, $250 from S P E C for supplies for Belmonte, six-week enrich program.
Motion to approve.
Yes, second.
Hi.
Um, acceptance of $1,600 from the S P E C for hiring a nurse for the eighth grade New York City field.
Motion to approve.
Second, all in favor? Next, we have, um, acceptance of a donation of a refrigerator, a new refrigerator for the Belmont from the Belmonte PTO for the Belmonte. Yes, second. So all in favor? Next, we have the acceptance, um, from the VELT. Next, we have, um, acceptance of um, from the VELT PTO for 28, $2,890. For school buses for a field trip. Yes, second. All in favor? Next, we have public comment. Seeing anything?
Executive.
To executive, not to the public.
To executive, not.
Yes.
Yes.